All right, let's get started. Good morning, everybody. September 2nd, Commissioners meeting. Hope everybody had a good weekend, good long weekend. Had great weather. Let's do the roll call for attendance.
Tim Meyer?
Here.
Donnie Lawson?
Here.
Scott Powell?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes from the August 18th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same side. The consent agenda. Anything there?
Um, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Old business, uh, new or amended human resource policies. Lisa Bruder and Amber. I'm sorry, there you are.
Here. Uh, so I'm gonna do the timekeeping policy first and Lisa will do the holiday policy. Uh, so the timekeeping policy was brought before, tableed for discussion, so we're bringing that back now. Ideally for a vote. Uh, this is just a breakdown of some requirements around timekeeping. We also wanted to take out the timekeeping system that was listed and that's been changing, so it would be more vague is what flat one we're doing. So looking through this, this is about, you know, exempt employees that are now required to clock in and out, aside from prosecutor's office and county attorney for their exempt employees, and that is per state guidelines that changed. Um, that was verified. This is, this would apply to Alden County employees, so not just those that are currently eligible as in time clock laws, uh, but this would be across the board for Alden County employees outside of sheriff's office who uses in time.
That is.
In a discussion.
We can just look at each other if you want. Just, uh, putting the exempt back in there and then, yeah. The two fifteen minute breaks, though, that employees are eligible to receive, those are not clocking in and out, because when you clock in and out, it does not make them paid, and those are paid for, so that is a change that was also made to this policy.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same side. Holiday policy.
So you guys have received the proposal, so this is just for your cases, uh, to review or whatever. So it's all the basic holidays, it's just stating, uh, the good Friday memorial, starting with New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, uh, Christmas Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and then proposing, um, employee birthday. And then, of course, you have your election years that you have the primary, um, if it's first Tuesday after the first Monday in May, same thing for the general election, first Tuesday after the first Monday in May, or in November. And then, um, we apply, if a holiday falls on Thursday, for us to be, on Friday, it will also be treated as a holiday. And then if a holiday falls on Saturday, it will be observed on the preceding Friday. And if a holiday falls on Sunday, it will be observed on the following Monday. Um, all right, this is all subject to change, by an order of the Commissioners, I guess. So that's what we're proposing.
It's on the agenda for discussion, is it?
I don't know if anybody has, this is the first I've seen this. Have you guys, like, approved it in committee, or?
This is what our committee has approved, yes.
Okay. And there's still a PTO revision coming, potentially?
Yes. We have a meeting on Thursday that we're gonna discuss. We're still working on the updates for PTO policy, which is currently tabled.
Oh, okay.
Um, this really is just putting something in place that way at the beginning of the year, you guys don't have to do the vote on what holidays to make, these are the same holidays with the change of employee birthday, which would be, have to be used within their birthday month. But this is just putting those days in place, so that way it's not a vote every year, that it's just in the handbook.
So if July 4th falls on a Thursday, the way this is written, there would automatically be a holiday on Friday?
That's correct.
And if Christmas Eve is on a Wednesday and Christmas Day is on a Thursday, then Friday would automatically be a holiday?
Yes, which you guys previously approved this year. So I believe next year, the day that that would affect is, uh, New Year's week. You got New Year's Eve on Wednesday and New Year's Day on Thursday, so it would be that, uh, Friday following. Like, it's once in a great while that it falls that way, so.
I mean, I would like to wait on voting on this until we see the PTO.
Yeah, this is just big part of the discussion.
Yeah, right.
To, we've been having interviews with you guys, so.
Any discussion?
So we need to table it then?
Yes.
Move to table it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Thank you. New business legal issues.
Um, there are three performance bonds and one maintenance bond. The first is a performance bond for Peabody Farms East, Section 3, the total amount of $502,738.50. The second one is a performance bond for Perry Worth Road, the amount of $446,555. The third one is a performance bond for Rital Oaks South, Section 1, the amount of $723,396.30. And the final is a maintenance bond for Windswept Farms of $170,544.96.
I will move that we accept those bonds.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same side. Approval of bond counsel.
Um, as you know, we released RFPs in July, I believe. Highway Department is in need of bond counsel for issuance to, um, handle infrastructure needs. We have one that's rolling off this year, so we did an RFP just to see, uh, who would be interested and for what dollar amount. We have four responses, uh, Boz McKinney and Evans, Taft, Barnes and Thornburg, and Ice Miller.
Um, yeah, so we got, actually, we sent out for, um, I think we, did we have them at the last meeting? I think, the initial proposals?
No, I don't believe so. So we released these in July, and then we met an executive session with the seven counsel members and the auditor to discuss, um, the initial responses we had received. During that executive session, it was, um, realized that we had more specific information that we could provide to the responders, so I sent follow-up emails to all four law firms, um, with the information from the financial advisor. And then each provided an updated response based on the more specific information.
Yeah, so we got, uh, we were able to get, um, basically not to exceed proposals back with that better information that we got, that we got. And so I would, I'd make a motion that based on the revised proposals that we got back, that we, um, we approve, uh, Boz McKinney and Evans. So they were the, uh, they were the best member that we got back.
I'll second your motion.
Do you have an amount?
All in favor?
Debbie asked for the amount, the four hundred thousand?
Yes.
You gotta make the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Aye.
Uh, ordinance 2025.
No. Should be assessment reassessment, RFP responses. Under approval of bond counsel. Uh, I'm not gonna open these because these are not bids. These were responses to RFPs, but didn't want to acknowledge at the meeting that we received, um, two responses to the assessment reassessment that the, um, assessor's office released in July. We have, um, for both RFPs, because there's two separate ones, we have a response from GUTS, and we also have a response from Nexus Group. You guys can work with the assessor on seeing who's responsive and selecting. Question? The assessor's looking at me.
I thought, I, this is my first time going through this part of the process, I thought they would be open and then...
Well, I can't, these are, they're bid, they're not bids, so I don't have to open them in a public meeting and discuss them. I can, if you would like me to do. I'm concerned that I'm not gonna be able to find the numbers, I don't sleep, but I can try.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is the preference that I open them, it doesn't matter?
Doesn't really matter, so I just pass them to her and...
It will become public once they're selected. I just am more concerned that I'm not gonna be able to find the information.
Just need a motion to take them under advisement, or?
Please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Now we're in ordinance. Yep.
Oh, ordinance. Ordinance 2025-09, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 151, uh, of the Boone County Code of Ordinances, unsafe building laws. This is our second reading. So I'll open a public hearing for any comment. Is there anyone? Okay. Hearing done, I'll close the public meeting and we can, we can vote on this. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we discussed this at the last meeting, it's basically just clarifying some of the enforcement authority terms and that kind of thing, is that correct?
Yeah, we're clarifying enforcement authority and hearing authority.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Uh, next up, a request for a laptop. Debbie, aye?
Good morning. Debbie Ayer, Boone County Recorder. Um, I'm here only because I know we kinda don't have a policy on laptop. And during, uh, the budget discussions, um, there's discussion about getting away from laptops. And, um, so in my office, I have a knee situation that occurred, uh, due to a part-time staff member having a medical issue. And we were thinking that she would be able, while she's at home for a while, to work from there to just do some, uh, some of the stuff that she does in our office, which is basically, I'm just gonna be honest with you, indexing. And she could continue to do that. But I wanted, uh, and I had not talked to Sean about it yet, because I thought if the answer is flat out no, that we don't want that to happen, then there wasn't any reason to go further. Um, I was thinking if I would be able to purchase that laptop out of my perpetuation fund, but I talked with Sean, Sean was kind enough this morning to come up and say, "What are you thinking here?" And, um, no. Um, and so he, they've got some extra laptops, um, if we need to do that. We'll, you know, we'll make sure that we have a more defined time, we're not sure how long she's going to be off. And, um, at this point, we know at least two weeks and maybe a little bit longer. But if she can do anything at home, again, this is a part-time person, so it wouldn't be a matter of, I mean, we would know exactly when she's on the computer and when she's off. But I just thought maybe I should come before you to see if that would be okay, if we did that, if it worked out, she could work from home there, but only for the time period she would be off until she's able to come back into the office, physically come back to the office.
My thought was, I don't see any reason to add to our overall inventory for something temporary. We could make one of our spares that we have on standby for a couple of weeks and, and get by and not spend any, you know, money on it.
I, I agree with you. I move to...
And I'm more than happy for that, if you guys are okay with that.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
All right, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Any opposed? Same side.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Request for appraisal, Jennifer Lastley.
Good morning. Jennifer Lastley, assessor. Uh, I came before you guys last month, or last month, I believe, and asked for an appraisal for a property that is going to the IBTR, um, for their 2024 assessment. They have made it very, and, and I got that, it did come in higher than where, um, the P2O board set them. So I'll be taking that to the IBTR for the appraisal, trying to get them to increase the value instead of leaving it low. Um, but they have made it clear to me that they're not willing to talk with me about the 2025 assessment either. So I have contacted and got, I think you guys should have a copy of the letter, um, of the same person who did the original 2024 appraisal for me for this property. Um, I'm just asking if she can do one for 2025. And it is, it's a lower, I mean, it's a lower price than the first one.
This Bowman and Associates, seven?
Uh-huh.
I think it's a good idea to do it again, so I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, let's see the amount, please. Oh, uh, four hundred? Yes.
Vendor ID badge request, Justin Missler.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Public, thanks for coming today and thank you for hearing me. Um, with our new building, um, I guess we'll be back up previously when we worked out of Wytham Hospital. Um, people that were, came into our care and out of our care were managed through the hospital security staff. In our new, uh, building, uh, we do that. Um, and we use a third-party transport systems, third-party transport service for investigations we do outside of the hospital, um, and they drive to our facility and stuff. So I'm asking today, I have that, and then our biohazardous recovery, um, company that we work with, I'd like to get a vendor ID that would give them access to our garage. Um, that, that's, when we do an investigation, oftentimes the deceit makes into our building as we're finishing up a little bit ahead of time. They can, uh, access that and get our garage door open and maintain the dignity of the deceit that we're taking care of. So I'm asking for the four, there are four employees with that company, and then, um, with Covenant, and then one with Spartan Bio Recovery Services, so five total vendor IDs.
Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have one question. Chief Deputy Beard, is that, there isn't any kind of a conflict with the jail? That's, just so I know.
So the, so in our, so we have, uh, two access doors to our building, and we have our building that's locked in basically three separate segments, segments. The administrative office, the surgical suite, and then the garage that houses our, um, storage area. So the, the request that I'm making for this is just gonna be specifically to the access to the door that gets to the garage. Um, they can get in there, do their business, they would not be on the other side of the house. It does not connect, our building does not have any physical connection to the rest of the, uh, the jail site.
Okay.
Yeah, they just, just add to that, yeah, there's, there's no way to get from this area or vice versa, back and forth. I think as long as they have the badges, that the rest of us don't allow them into that garage.
Right. And the way we've designed the security system, we, we've segmented it by, like, he can't even get down in area over it and, um, on his, on my side, even as the corner, so.
Okay.
So it's, it's almost...
I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, and in addition to that, we've taken our internal security controls, um, and that, that area that they would be in is under video surveillance, um, all the time, so we'll know who goes in and out, and we'll be able to see who's in control, can see, uh, who's in and out of our building all the time.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, Donnie made a motion and I'll second it.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Thank you, sir.
And then I, actually, I'm your next, I am on the agenda as well.
So, uh, currently, um, we have budgeted for our cellphone budget.
Um, I've learned that, uh, I now have to come ask for that to, uh, do any additional purchase on that. My, uh, office currently has two cellular phones assigned to it myself and my chief deputy. Um, I'm asking for two additional ones, uh, one for our part-time, uh, staff that work the Monday through Friday, they would split utilization of that, and then I'd like to have an investigator, um, phone that when my staff, my PRD and staff are working, they can come in if they need it, or come in to get a vehicle, get the phone. And then that way, all communications that are coming from our office are coming from our office and not people's personal phones. Uh, through the course of our investigations, we talked to lots of people. I feel like it's, uh, slightly unfair to my team to have to utilize their personal cellphones to make those communications. Um, that's just a lot of exposure, especially when we're away from work and people having our information. I have the money budgeted in my budget, um, not require anything additional. I'm just coming for you to ask for permission to utilize that.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, release RFP for health clinic, Amber.
Uh, I'm just asking that we release the RFP for client options, uh, to receive those. And that we've discussed in Health Insurance Committee, we're moving forward with. Um, and then something we've also done a few times within the past few years, so just releasing another RFP for customers.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same side. Thank you. Uh, Nick is next up with his unofficial local detour.
Nick Barvin, County Highway. Uh, sign us for an unofficial local detour where 421 will be closed just north of 32. Coming up in a few weeks, it's currently closed just south of 47. We previously set up an unofficial local detour to go to the east of the closure. We determined it might be better to go to the west of the closure due to the, the other closures in the area and other roadwork that's occurring. So this is just a request to modify what we had previously approved for this unofficial local detour, to now use 800 east and 100 north, which are east of 421, instead of, it's actually west of 421, they've miswritten it on this side, I haven't edited it, but, um, it was previously 100 northeast of 421, now we're gonna go to the west.
Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Nick, next up, still.
Uh, the next item is for a project we recently awarded federal funds for Bridge 139, which is on Baseline Road just south, it's actually on 875 West, just south of Baseline Road. Uh, bridge is in poor condition, uh, weight rated, all kinds of other issues with it, um, with, when we get a federal funds awarded for construction and construction inspection, we're required to do a National Environmental Protection Act document, and it comes with any federal dollars. So in order to do that, we can engage a consultant to do the environmental work and all the summits that are necessary. The total for that work on this authorization to proceed for USI to do that work is $35,500. And then there's an additional, uh, $5,000 if needed for additional inspection of an archaeological site if anything happens to be found, which we do not anticipate. Uh, but if it's, if it's found to be needed, we need to be able to quickly do that investigation so we can keep the project moving, uh, on time.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Sally?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Thank you, sir. Axon Enterprises Incorporated Contract, Kent Eastwood.
Good morning, Boone County Prosecutor Kent Eastwood. Um, there's a contract that our office would like to enter into for our software beginning, uh, in October, after the budget's finalized. I gave it to Beth for her review. Everything was fine with it except for three things that she wants added, which are statutory, basically. It's an E-Verify, uh, clause, and I ran certification clause and a good faith clause. So they're gonna be adding those hopefully soon, so just hoping to get your approval, provided that those three things get added to the contract that I can sign in, in October.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dilling Group Quote for a domestic hot water heater for the old portion of the Boone County Justice Center, Max.
Good morning, this is, uh, like you said, there's for a redundant water heater system, um, for the Boone County Jail. We discussed it through the budget process that we wanted to, uh, pay for this through bond funds instead of budgeting, um, county dollars, so, uh, the quote, uh, updated quote was $83,800. And that would be paid for with bond. Uh, this kinda came about last year. We had a, a ten-day period where we were without hot water for residential units, and, um, it's not really acceptable, so we need to get that fixed. We're gonna go with a tankless system.
Move to approve.
Second.
Can, can I speak contingent on legal? I have not read the contract yet. He sent it to me, I just have to...
Move to approve with the blessing of legal counsel, how's that?
Thanks.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side. Next.
The, the second one I have today is the, is to replace the air compressor in the shop at the Highway Department. Um, the one that we have there is definitely in good even god shape, so we're gonna replace it with something quieter and a lot better, uh, more efficient machine, sorry. Um, total on that is $11,313.
Move to approve.
Second.
Pending legal review.
Okay, pending legal review, so, we've got a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Councilor, committee update, please, sir.
I think everything else is on, has been put on, um, the PTO, and we've just been, we're waiting till our meeting on Thursday to address it, so we're, hopefully finishing up anything that we have on our request for next, for next Commissioner lead-in. That's all.
Sir?
Table it up.
Thank you. Uh, Insurance Committee Updates, Commissioner Byer.
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting last week, don't remember the day, it was a good meeting. Lots of, uh, discussion and options on, uh, for next year. Uh, and I believe we're having another meeting after the next Commissioner meeting.
Thank you, sir. Staff Reports, Area Plan. Max Capital Investments. Health Department, Doc? Highway Department, Nick? Human Resources. IT Support. Communications. Preview Extension.
Andrea Hethel, Preview Extension, just a few updates on some programs that are coming up. Um, if you haven't signed up yet for Matter of Balance, it's a fall prevention program, highly regarded program. As, last date, or last day for registration is today. Last day for, last day for registration is today. The program will start later this week. We also have a septic maintenance workshop coming up. We'll be sending some information out for you guys to share this, to help people prevent those costly repairs to their septic systems. So this is in partnership with Boone County Water and also with the Health Department. And looking for interest in an American Citizen Planner Program. It's a statewide program that Purdue Extension offers and it's for local government, for those that are on area plan, BZA, and even just interested citizens to find out how the whole planning process works within your community. So if you're interested in that and would like more information, let me know.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Approval, oh, I'm sorry. Say your name and address, please.
Jody Stewart, by now you guys all know me. I just wanted to come up and address the commissioners. I know that a couple of weeks ago, I served you with an affidavit. First off, I want to make sure I don't break any rules here. So how much public speaking time do I have?
Three minutes.
All right, does anybody else in the room want to speak or would you like to yield your time to me?
That's not an option.
Can't do that. It's not an option?
No.
All right. So I guess what I want to say is that we just recently did have a Supreme Judge recognize that the Constitution, we the people do have all the power and we do have the right to instruct our elected officials. I know that you have been served with notices and you've been served with affidavits. I know that Tim did take the opportunity to address one of those notices as far as do the people have the ability to instruct their elected officials? Two of you chose not to. I know that the RL Turner is on hold right now and it has been tabled. And I would like for you guys to recognize that you had a room full of people here that were opposed to that. So when you go to vote next time, if there is any discrepancy on how you should vote, that maybe you should ask the public that is in attendance and take a public vote on how they feel. The people do have the right to instruct their government. I have not acted on the affidavit that I served the three of you, but I will tell you that my reception at the council meeting was not welcomed either. And as a person that has the right to instruct their government, it is very discerning when you're trying to ask a question that you don't get an answer. And that you guys aren't willing to answer when you're asked, do we hold the power? And it has been confirmed that we do. So I just want to make you all aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Debbie Ayer, Boone County Taxpayer, and Jody, in all respect to you, I just want to say that all of the people have a voice, every single person. So if all of you, if we sent every single, every single one of us sent something to you, then at some point you have to decide which group of voices or the number of voices or the type of voices you're going to listen to. So in all fairness, you can, you're going to get lots of information, you already know that. So I think that a point was made before that you are elected to represent all of the people. And every single decision that's made, somebody's not going to be happy about it. I think you listen well, I think you make good, your decisions have to be based on facts, based on all of the voices, not just a few. So I'm saying that not to be argumentative, but to be supportive of the fact that we all have to know that there are voices everywhere coming at all of our elected officials, and I'm an elected official also. And we have to discern what decisions are going to be made and how they're going to be made. One person, one group, 10 people are not going to be the ones that make the final decision. So I just want you to know how much, all, most of us appreciate, everyone that I know appreciates the job that you have to do, our council members, our elected officials everywhere. And it's just not one person, one group that gets to make the decisions. And your job through the electoral, electric, I'm sorry, elected process is to listen to the people that you represent. We know that, the majority of us, and I just wanted to reiterate that to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to approval of claims.
I'll move to approve claims as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same side? Any commissioner comments?
Um, yeah. So we've got a new notice that I'm just, it's a very short notice, very similar to the one that we received about a month ago where it just simply asked the question, do people have all power, that I responded to. So I'm just going to quickly read this notice because it's very short. And it says, notice and point of clarity, do you agree with the Supreme Court declaring people are sovereign? Notice to agent is notice to principal and notice to principal is notice to agent. Says I and then a name, one of the people as seen in Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, Republican inform. Sui Juris do present you this notice so that you do provide due care. Please take notice that I, as one of the people, wish for you to give a point of clarity based on your position as a sworn trustee if you agree with the Supreme Court declaring people are sovereign or not. Please take notice that the Supreme Court in Loper Bright Enterprises versus Romondo, which is its 2024 Supreme Court case, declared, quote, "The Constitution promises the American people are sovereign and they alone may, through democratically responsive processes, amend our foundational charter or revise federal legislation. Under, unelected judges enjoy no such power." Please take final notice that is my wish and demand that you respond publicly within 10 business days with clarity in regard to your understanding if you agree with the Supreme Court that the American people are sovereign over government or not. This went to, uh, it went to Indiana Governor Mike Braun, all members of the House of Representatives, all members of the Senate, of the Indiana Senate, Indiana Attorney General, Indiana Supreme Court, uh, then a whole bunch of municipalities and counties, Lebanon, West Lafayette, Warsaw, Kosciusko County, Tippecanoe County, Boone County, Benton County, Warren County, Clinton County, Huntington County, Town of Mulberry, Blackford County, uh, Huntington County School Board Corporation, Town of Whitestown, City of Huntington, and then some judges, United States District Court for Southern District of Indiana, Northern District of Indiana, United States Court of Appeals for Seventh Circuit, Associate Justice Amy Kona Barrett at the Supreme Court, and Indiana Lieutenant Governor Micah Beckwith. So I'm going to respond because I try and respond to any times anybody sends us a, sends us a notice. I think generally speaking, people recognize intuitively, intuitively when things are being done wrong and they send us these things to give us information, that's what a notice is, they're, they're noticing that, you know, government isn't doing what it agreed to do when they took an oath to the Constitution. So, uh, this was, I don't think it was, well, it wasn't this notice and it wasn't the do people have all power notice, but there was actually a notice on the last council agenda and there were council members that were attempting to respond, I think actually Kevin's in the room, he was attempting to respond and then, uh, because Jody was there just asking the simple question and then she was told, she was told her time was up. So nobody even, nobody else even got an opportunity to respond, which is unfortunate because it's a very simple question. And I, I don't, I don't know who, as an elected official, would disagree with the Supreme Court declaring that the people are sovereign. It's the same thing that Article 1, Section 1 says in our Constitution, which is the people have all, all power. It's about as simple a notice as you can get and respond to. And, and actually, um, interestingly, I had somebody send me just within the past few days, a staff attorney on the Indiana Supreme Court actually responded, basically insinuating that a notice, when people send notice about the Constitution, that it, that it's not a binding contract. So I don't, I don't, uh, know what they were trying to get at, but an oath to the Constitution is absolutely a binding contract. And the same letter said that any further notices would be disregarded and discarded. So I would actually love to see everybody that's copied on this notice, all of our state elected officials, all of the local elected officials, including the Indiana Supreme Court, uh, since apparently there's a staff attorney that has kind of taken exception to receiving a notice, I would love to see the Indiana Supreme Court respond to this notice. So pretty simple question to respond to and that's all I have. If anybody else wants to respond, you're welcome to.
Tim, who is the author of that letter?
Uh, it is... Hang on, I gotta look it up. It is a Jennifer Shercliff.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Any other commissioner comments?
No.
For motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Thank you all for being, I appreciate it.